I'm going to call the Board of Supervisors to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Here.
Here. Thank you. We're going to move on to Item 3, which is our invocation. We have Pastor Emory here with us today.
Well, good morning. Let's pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for this time that we have to be able to think through the critical issues at hand. I pray that you would give this leadership team wisdom, their staff and their team's resources they need to discuss and to decide certain things, and that you would go before them and that you would help them make the best decisions for our community. We thank you for this community that we live in, that we call home. We thank you for the opportunities we have to grow and enhance and improve this community. May we do so with wisdom and in truth. Give this day, give to them this day all that they need to accomplish your purposes, we pray. Amen.
It's not even a Monday. How'd this happen? Is that working?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move along. Ms. Walt, some public comment, please?
Yes. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I want to thank the mayor, city manager, and deputy city manager for meeting with me yesterday regarding the Fourth of July celebration. So I'm here and thank you for the city, for your support for the fireworks. It's greatly appreciated. As you know, RSVP, Nevada Rural County's RSVP program has been hosting the fireworks show for the last 27 years. With that being said, we are in need of donations. So I'm here to ask the, ask you, the public, everybody in the room as well. The fireworks show is quite expensive. It's actually $1,000 a minute. And we are planning a very spectacular show this year. So our fireworks are, we have larger fireworks that we have ordered for the show. It's going to be a little bit longer of a show, 20 to 25 minutes long. So again, your donations are greatly appreciated. What separates us, I think this is a community event, and what separates us from other events within the city is I can't charge a ticket price to watch the fireworks. So when you're out there enjoying them from your front yard, your back, you know, your back deck, or the mountaintops, up by Sea Hill, or whatever else, you know, we ask that you please, you know, look to donating towards the fireworks. And we have a GoFundMe page set up that it says, "Save Carson City Fireworks." We are anticipating a large crowd now that Douglas County has canceled their fireworks. We are receiving phone calls from residents in California asking if we're going to be doing our fireworks. They'll be coming down to, to watch the show. So we're anticipating a large crowd. So I ask you and everyone who's watching or listening, if you would please, you can also donate on our website, which is nevadaruralRSVP.org. You can find a donation page there, or go find the GoFundMe page. But again, I'm here to thank the city for your support. We greatly appreciate the redevelopment funds that we have received, and we're just asking everyone else for their donations. And we will then hopefully all see you on the Fourth of July. Thank you.
Do I have further public comment?
There's no other public comment on the line at this time.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge that we received public comment from Mr. Schaefer. So for the record, we did have public comment that we all read, but I like to call that out in the record in case he's listening, that he recognizes we did receive his, uh, public comment. His last chance, anyone else in the audience? Okay. We're going to move on to Item 6, which is possible action for the approval of our minutes from May 6th. Supervisor Giomi?
Yes, ma'am. There were two typos that I caught. Not only Shark Tamar, but me as well, that I caught them. They're minor, non-substantive typos which have been corrected at the 11:21 mark and at the 10:13 mark. So I moved to approve the corrected May 6, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as corrected. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Okay. Hear myself talking. You all can hear me? On the streaming one, they can't hear? Are we wanting to recess for a minute? Or can we? We're going to take, we're going to take a five-minute recess to see, because some people might be trying to watch the presentations. And just in case, you're here and I can see a nice, nice support group, but, so we'll take a five-minute recess to see if we can hook up the microphone so everyone can hear besides the people in this room. And if not, we'll just move, we'll move forward at that. So we'll take a recess till about quarter till. Thank you for helping. We've got audio to all of our locations but the TV. So we do have the online Facebook and on our granicus, on our website itself, for those that usually watch via the computer. So we have that piece accomplished. So we're going to move on to our special presentations. I'm going to read them from here, and then I'm going to ask both sets to please, we'll take Kayla and her family and coworkers for the first round of pictures and presentation, and then we'll do the proclamation for the pollinator. So I'm going to start with the proclamation. "A day to honor Kayla Sue Testa. Whereas on January 15, 2021, at 11:00 a.m., a vehicle crashed into Sportsman Warehouse, injuring five people. And whereas employee Kayla, without concern for her safety, reached over the counter and lifted a small girl into her arms out of the path of danger and held her until the crises was over. And whereas Kayla incurred a sprained wrist during the rescue. Now therefore, I Lori Bagwell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim June 3, 2021, as a day to honor Kayla Sue Testa for her courage and selflessness in taking fast action and saving a life." I actually went to the crash scene. I'm telling you, that was something else. If, if any of you would have seen the inside of that store, I think you would have been in shock that, how it went all, all the way across, right? From one door to the other. So amazing, but your presence of mind, again, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We also have a proclamation for the National Pollinator Month. I like this one, too. "Whereas pollinator species such as birds and insects are essential partners of farmers and ranchers in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy biodiverse ecosystems. And whereas the state of Nevada provides producers and conservation assistance to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection and maintenance of pollinators and their habitats on working lands and wildlands. And whereas Carson City has been named 76th Bee City USA by the Cersei Society to acknowledge the work done by local pollinators to create and maintain pollinator habitats. And whereas the Carson City Chamber Leadership Class of 2019 and 2020 further acknowledged the importance of pollinators by having created a special bee habitat on Carson Tahoe Health Property to attract pollinators. And now therefore, I Lori Bagwell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as National Pollinator Month in Carson City. And I urge all citizens to recognize the important role of pollinator species and conservation efforts to ensure their protection. And if you have a chance tomorrow morning at 9:00, you can come to this lovely bee habitat at 9:00 a.m. up at Carson Tahoe Hospital, right next to the Cancer Center, and join us for a lovely little walk and clean-up and learning session and just, how about just a beautiful day to spend together. So I welcome you to that, too. We'll go down and we'll do some presentations and pictures.
Whatever, whatever's better. Photo op.
Yeah, so Luke.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It really was.
Can we, you guys have a chance to go and see the?
Do you want to be in here?
Sure.
Oh, this is wonderful.
Okay.
That would never be me. I'm already short.
Yeah.
Do you want me to take a photo with your cell phones?
Please.
And whereas the state of Nevada provides producers and conservation assistance to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection and maintenance of pollinators and their habitats on working lands and wildlands. And whereas Carson City has been named 76th Bee City USA by the Cersei Society to acknowledge the work done by local pollinators to create and maintain pollinator habitats. And whereas the Carson City Chamber Leadership Class of 2019 and 2020 further acknowledged the importance of pollinators by having created a special bee habitat on Carson Tahoe Health Property to attract pollinators. And now therefore, I Lori Bagwell, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as National Pollinator Month in Carson City. And I urge all citizens to recognize the important role of pollinator species and conservation efforts to ensure their protection. And if you have a chance tomorrow morning at 9:00, you can come to this lovely bee habitat at 9:00 a.m. up at Carson Tahoe Hospital, right next to the Cancer Center, and join us for a lovely little walk and cleanup and learning session and just, how about just a beautiful day to spend together. So I welcome you to that, too. We'll go down and we'll do some presentations and pictures.
Yes, absolutely. Just right on up here.
All right, three, do it over here.
Whatever, whatever's better. Photo op.
Yeah, so Luke.
Absolutely.
It really was.
Can we, you guys have a chance to go and see the?
Do you want to be in here?
Oh, this is wonderful.
That would never be me. I'm already short.
Yeah.
Do you want me to take a photo with your cell phones?
Please.
Do you have permission to put out the pictures?
If there's anything where I can use this color or expression, start with pretty much the black.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much.
Well, I've just, that's just phenomenal. I, I don't remember. But it was just that I had a quick.
To have that as an object.
Well, right, right. To make something so selfless and poignant and amazing.
Just like that.
Kelly did a good job.
It was phenomenal. I always thank you.
Okay, great. Let's get some pictures of Lindsay and Kelly and his Jen.
I'm so excited about our people.
It turned out beautiful.
She's got the poster.
She's trying to hook you out, girl.
It's so weird. I don't like that at all.
You've done a phenomenal job organizing us, getting us on track with your vision. We're meeting with businesses. The businesses are excited. There's a lot of positive attitude. And over the month, we're going to have lots of fun activities.
I think this is going to be. I'm so excited about Carson City. So we made June the Bee Time, Bee Time Month, and inviting all the businesses to share some type of a bee food item or a honey item. And there's no expense to any of this. It's all really, right? Celebrating. So I thought really that Carson City needed a celebration coming out of all of this, and I couldn't think of anything better than Pollinator Month and just being kind to one another, so.
I think that's going to be recorded. So if you can, thanks, you know, you don't want to even give me a poster. I'll, I'll distribute it to some more businesses. That would sound good to me. Something with honey.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, that's great, because I've got some more ideas. I'm not done.
Okay, good.
All right. Well, that was wonderful. We're going to move on then to our consent agenda. And for the public, we will not be considering Item 9A. That will move to our next agenda in June. We had some, a few little corrections that were necessary that we couldn't get done in time for today's meeting. So do I have any members that would like anything from the consent agenda pulled? Disclosure. Okay. On the consent?
On 15A? Is that?
No. I'm doing just consent. That's okay. I'll call you, I promise, on yours. Okay. Supervisor Giomi, you may have a motion?
Yeah. I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of Item 8A, Resolution 2021-R-16, 10A, and 11A as presented.
Wait. 8A, 8B?
8A. Sorry.
Okay.
Let me amend my motion to include 8B as well as 8A, and correct that the resolution is on 8B, 2021-R-16.
Perfect.
16. Thank you.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor White. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 13, which is the Airport Authority Lease. Does any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Tekus? Seeing none, all accept a motion. Supervisor White? Do I have a second? Supervisor Jones? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carried unanimously. Keep your bill low. Have a good day. Thank you. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 14A. And I'd just like staff to come on, up on this one. We'll just have a brief discussion about potential updates. Who's taking this one? No, I won't need it for Carol. Okay. Hmm? Yes. So, um, if you want to just take us through the high level of what you're going to do on this, and then we can have a little discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So thanks for having me. Randy Rice, City Engineer, for the record. So this is the Long Street Reconstruction Project, which we're really excited about. We're going to be doing street re-impro, or improvements along the length of Long Street between Roop and Salomon. We also have a number of water and sewer line improvements in that area as well. And then we also have some storm drain improvements running along Rand Avenue between Lincoln Highway and Long Street. And I think one of the questions that might come up is the potential addition of alternates of storm drain improvements on Rand Avenue, also between Long and Camille, moving up to Sunland. So I think that's the, the general overview, but definitely needed improvements in this area.
So what I wanted to discuss with the board, we can't take action on this today, but we have alternatives that were properly bid, that we could consider, that are eligible for the funding that we have that is from the federal government, that we could spend to fund the remainder of these projects. And so we'll be discussing things that we can do with that and where this board wants to go. So I just wanted to put on the record to request that staff put this, um, these alternates to be able to speed up. If, if you can remember, in the stormwater plan, we had a 10-year matrix for our improvements for stormwater, but potentially we have the option of speeding that up maybe to a five-year plan and, and take some of these and get them funded sooner, which would certainly be good for the community, right? Anything we can do to correct our problems sooner would be better. So I just wanted you to consider bringing this for, just back, for a discussion to spend from the American Recovery Plan. As these are directly eligible, there's very few things they called out specifically, but water, sewer, and There's very few things they called out specifically, but water, sewer, and stormwater are specific callouts in the act. So does anyone else have any comments, questions? Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, my, my only comment, and I, and I don't disagree. I think, I think, you know, spending that on projects that we have on the board and have to do, like, like Quill, like this, totally makes sense. I, I, my only concern is that we don't spend it on something like this before we have a broader discussion and sort of plan, is this the right place to spend it? So I don't, I don't disagree with the concept. I just don't know if it makes sense in my mind to push it through right now for this particular project, but just a broad discussion that, yeah, anything we can do to accelerate. I'm particularly interested in Quill because of the ramifications and of, of our inability to use that water and all that goes with that. But, yeah.
Yeah, we're definitely working on the Quill Water Treatment Plant, just for the public that's listening. Any thoughts or anything that you have on ideas that the board should consider for that money? We welcome those public comments. We will at our retreat in July. It is the discussion topics, and which is why I've asked staff to bring potential projects that we could utilize those funds for and, and really then have our discussion on what we think the path forward is. But please put this project on there. As I understand, the contractor's willing to accept a, a change order to complete the other projects that were listed if we so desire to go in that path. So, thank you.
Yes, staff is more than happy to support the board in whichever decision you make.
Thank you. If there's no, uh, Mr. Jones?
So are we going to discuss these alternatives today?
No. No, the agenda item only has the maximum of two point eight five eight four sixty. So we, we cannot change the maximum amount, but we could in July bring it back and do a change order if we decide that that's, if these are good projects that make our list for the money. So, okay. With that, if there's no other questions, I'll accept a motion for the contract as presented.
I move to award the contract as presented.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Supervisor Shutey and a second by Supervisor Giomi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you so much. And I'm betting I'm going to see more on that list. They're smiling. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda fifteen A, which is discussion and possible action on the funding and final recommendations for some CDBG COVID-19 money. May I have a disclosure, Ms. Shutey?
Thank you. NRS two eight one A point four two zero requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I serve as a volunteer board member for the Ron Wood Family Resource Center, a nonprofit organization which applied and is recommended for CDBG funding under this agenda item. In my private commitment, I have a fiduciary duty to the Ron Wood Family Resource Center. Although the recommended funding amounts under this item are submitted by the Application Review Work Group without my involvement, this board may choose to accept, deny, or modify these recommendations. Because the judgment of a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by my relationship with Ron Wood, I will not be voting on this matter.
Thank you. May I have a disclosure, Supervisor Giomi?
Yes, ma'am. NRS two eighty one A four twenty requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I'm a volunteer board member for advocates to end domestic violence, and I'm also employed by Nevada Health Centers. Both entities are nonprofit organizations that have applied for and are recommended for CDBG funding under this agenda item. Therefore, in my private commitment, I have a fiduciary duty to both organizations and a substantial and continuing business relationship with Nevada Health Centers as my employer. Although the recommended funding amounts under this item are submitted by the Application Review Work Group without my involvement, this board may choose to accept, deny, or modify these recommendations. Because the judgment of a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by my relationship with both advocates to end domestic violence and Nevada Health Centers, I will not be voting on this matter.
Thank you. Ms. Gavrich, would you give us the highlights, please?
Good morning. There we go. For the record, my name is Miria Nagavich, grants administrator for Carson City. This agenda item is to approve the Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 Funding, known as CDBGCV. As recommended by our Application Review Work Group, Carson City received five eligible CDBGCV applications. And I'm going to run through each one of those and just talk very briefly about what they're requesting. Number one, Ron Wood Family Resource Center requested a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The funding will help prevent the potential eviction for families in Carson City due to COVID-19. This includes wraparound services like employment services, mental and physical health referrals, and educational counseling, just to name a few. The next applicant was RSVP, Veterans Services and Support. They requested forty six thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. The funds requested are to provide staff costs. RSVP staff would schedule and advertise COVID-19 vaccinations to homebound seniors and veterans. Vaccines to be provided by Nevada Health Centers. So Nevada Health Centers and RSVP have partnered up, which I, I greatly appreciate, by the way. Nevada Health Centers is our next applicant, and they requested ninety-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. These funds would support vacci- vaccinating Carson City residents at local businesses through the RSVP program and possibly children at school sites. They're still working through that program or trying to put together that program. The next applicant is Advocates to End Domestic Violence. They requested thirty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. The funds will provide bacterial resistant mattresses for their clients and a part-time case manager to coordinate COVID-19 vaccinations for their clients. And the last applicant is the Boys and Girls Club of Western Nevada. They requested twenty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents. The funding will replace existing bathroom fixture, fixtures to be touchless, replace the drinking fountain to be a water bottle filling station, and support the installation of ultraviolet scrubbers into existing deckwork in order to improve their air quality. With the money requested, Carson City will still have a remaining balance of about a hundred and seventy-three, not about, but will have a balance of a hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred dollars for the next CDBGCV application cycle. Any questions?
Does any member have a question? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion from either Supervisor White or Supervisor Jones. One of these is going to be a motion, and the other's going to be a second. Thank you.
I move to approve the funding and recommendation as presented.
I have a motion by Supervisor Jones, a second by Supervisor White to approve. All those in favor say aye. All those no, say no. All those within abstention. We had three yeses, two abstentions by Supervisor Giomi and Supervisor Shutey. Motion carried. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the next. We're on to item sixteen A, which is concerning the action to submit a grant request to the federal government, which is now RACE, which used to be Tiger, right? Well, I'm going to try something different. Does anyone have any questions about this proposal? Nope. All those wanting to make a motion, raise your hand. Supervisor Shutey?
I move to approve the submission of a RACE grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Williams Street Complete Streets Project.
Supervisor White, are you a second?
No, I have a comment after the second.
Comment after? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll start it.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Shutey and a second by Supervisor Jones on discussion. Supervisor White?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that we did get a public comment on this particular item in regards to some consternation over how complete streets operate. I just wanted to point out that, and staff can confirm this, that within our complete streets policy and throughout that entire document from the feds and everywhere, we do have the ability to work on flexible portions of, of that concept so that, I know I've, I've always had a, a lot of angst about complete streets projects, but we do have some flexibility. We are not tied into an, an exact formula that somebody else is deciding for Carson City to do.
Thank you. I think just really on discussion, it's important, I think, for the public to realize even what complete streets means to us because I, I support them in the concept of I'm not cutting a road twice, that I'm very interested in doing our water, our sewer, our stormwater, fixing our sidewalks, trying, trying to address as many of the issues as we can on the first, first try or the first go around. And I think that sometimes that gets lost in what we're trying to accomplish here versus the bike lane or the multi-use path. But I think those are also things that make your community, you know, I think everyone, it makes it enjoyable, and quality of life is something that our residents have supported for a very long time with our question eighteen. So I, I think you just, as Supervisor White said, I want Mr. Schaefer to recognize that we really do look at all aspects when we're going to put it together. So Supervisor Jones on discussion?
Yeah, it says, this is a sixty percent local match. Is this a ten million dollar grant? Or could, is it up to a ten million dollar grant?
So the way we worded the staff report is to have some flexibility of what we would propose on the grant application up to a maximum of sixty percent. So if, if the board were to approve this, then it would give staff the flexibility to do a sixty percent, which would be that ten million dollars. Just a little background on that, with the South Carson Street Project and the Tiger Grant, we were pretty strategic about that local match to try to make it a little bit stronger of an application. And so that's what we proposed with the, the successful Tiger Grant. And so we just wanted to leave some flexibility. We haven't made a final decision on, on exactly what we're going to do, but we wanted to have that flexibility there. Thank you.
On the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you guys so much. Okay, we're going to move. Going to move on to agenda item sixteen B for discussion on a resolution on our school zones. I think I've seen this several times. Ms. Maloney, please take us through this.
Just briefly, the information is in the staff report. If you recall, we brought, staff brought the redesignation of school zones to the Board of Supervisors last year in 2020, and this was the first time that school zone designations had been looked at since the nineties. You know, as Carson City, we're an efficient government, and so we don't have staff sort of sitting around looking for things to do. And so, you know, it's, it's these periodic reviews where we all do our best to take new information, in this case, change travel patterns. There was a, a school that had closed. And quite frankly, best practices for establishment of school zones had evolved in the past thirty years. And so we, we all did our best. It ran through RTC and had the support of the, the school district, the sheriff's office, you know, and we took in public comment as well. That said, we had the school year and we got public comment. We received comments from the sheriff's office, and the RTC heard a revised staff recommendation for some refinements to the school zones, including shortening of the school zone on Winnie Lane, some adjustments to the school zones at Boarderwick Bray, Eagle Valley Middle. And then RTC also discussed pulling back the school zone for Pioneer High School away from Stewart Street, which is, you know, it's a unique school. It's high schoolers. There's a fence there, and so it made sense to pull that back. Combined with engineering judgment and the Safe Rest of School Master Plan for Carson City that was approved in 2020, staff feel confident that the recommended adjustments to the school zones will serve us well going into the next calendar year. Should, you know, things change again in the future, we can certainly continue to refine. These things can be iterative. And so I appreciate your consideration of the attached resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Maloney, for, for the public, one of the other things that's within this refinement is we, as the board here, had allocated, you know, three hundred thousand for the flashing. So just for the record, that is incorporated in these, these changes, that there will be the flashing, while, while children are present, flashers to tell people that the speed limit's fifteen, correct?
That's exactly right. And so on some of those busy streets, we're working on designing that project now. We've already started purchasing some of the hardware and the poles related to that, and we hope to get those all installed in advance, if not very close to the first day of the fall school year.
Okay. Supervisor Jones, you have a question?
I, I just want to clarify, when we get these lights up, our times will, will not be all day then, right? I mean, there's, the reduced speed won't be all.
That's correct. So on those major corridors, to make them applicable when flashing.
Supervisor Shutey?
Thank you. I was just asked to share this yesterday afternoon. Some of the signage, is it possible, this person was concerned with the signage, the school's zone and the speed limit. He was hoping it can say when school is in session, and I said I would pass that along. Thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. I, I just want to give a shout out to staff on this one. What appears to be a pretty simple agenda item here really turned into quite a conversation about federal requirements versus local rules and regulations. And I, I just want to thank you guys for, I guess, putting up with, trying to get to the bottom of, of where the confusion was. So thank you guys for that. It was a pretty extensive conversation.
Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions. I do again want to applaud all of the staff and everyone that has worked so hard and I, and Ms. Kelly, the, the bubbles. I just cannot, it's an inside joke from an RTC meeting, but I've got to tell you, I think that the work that the staff put in when you then took an individual school and could really see where the zone was going to be, what, what an improved document, and really thank you so much for your hard work on that. I think it's going to help the public understand where we're going and why we went. And so I just also want to thank the public for just bearing with us, right? We admit, we, we did the best we could from a flat piece of paper. I, I'm going to admit to everyone, it's a lot harder when you're taking a magnifying glass out and trying to figure out all these little signs and all of that. So thank you, public, too, and staff. So I see that Supervisor Jones would like to make this motion.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty one R dash seventeen as presented.
Aye.
I see a, so I have a motion by Supervisor Jones, a second by Supervisor White. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Great job again.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item sixteen C, which is to discuss options for modifying our traffic input, impact study requirements. May I have a disclosure, Ms. Shutey?
Thank you. NRS two eight one A point four two zero requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. My nephew is Chris Martinovich, who is employed by Carson City and will be presenting this item. Chris and I are not receiving compensation of any kind directly related to this project, and we are not affected by this project differently from any other person in Carson City. I am making this disclosure in the interest of full transparency. But NRS two eight one A point four two zero requires abstention only in clear cases, and I do not believe that the independence of my judgment is materially affected by my familial relationship in this circumstance. Therefore, I do not have a disqualifying conflict and will be voting on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Shutey. Okay, Mr. Martinovich, are you going to start us off?
I am. Thank you, Mayor Bagwell. So Chris Martinovich, Transportation Traffic Engineer, Carson City Public Works. Want to just give kind of an update and overview on traffic study impact considerations that we've been reviewing and evaluating here at Carson City Public Works. So I want to give an overview, possible changes to how Carson City evaluates traffic and transportation impacts. traffic and transportation impact studies and how they relate to development projects here in Carson City. Kind of the agenda item listed there on the screen. First off, I want to start about what a traffic impact study is. We can kind of set the frame of reference for those of you who may not be as familiar with it, or for the public at large. Essentially, a traffic impact study is a written report that is used to analyze impacts resulting from new development to the existing system, the existing transportation system. It's really a document prepared by professional engineers, which are hired by the individual developments to collect data, identify the traffic, generate trips from the IT manual, and submit that for analysis and review by Carson City. They're really looking at things like delay in speed, delayed intersections and speed along roadway segments. So the more delay, the lower the speed and the longer it takes to get from point A to point B. I'll touch a little bit more on our code in a moment, but I want to talk about why we're reviewing our traffic impact study process. So there are a number of reasons, and they're listed here on this slide. But essentially, the first one there is our current process really results in a lot of inconsistencies between different types of development. We have different developments with different sizes and different locations of the city. So we're looking to provide a little bit more consistent methodology for more consistent results. The second one there is inconsistencies and discretion. And so we have, there's inconsistencies in what improvements are that are requested by staff. And we're looking for ways to limit some of that staff discretion and provide more clarity and a better understanding to developments. We want to provide more clarity, again, because of that location and that size discrepancy between different types of developments, so that smaller developments aren't doing similar larger type improvements that maybe a larger development would have to do. And so we're looking for that balance, that equity in those different types of developments. Third one there is limited opportunity to address other types of impact. Our traffic impact study process and code really focuses on vehicular traffic, but there are other modes of transportation, as we know, pedestrians and bicycles and transit that could potentially have conflicts and that. So we're looking to evaluate those as well as those traffic impacts. Traffic impact studies are generally capacity focused, where we have, again, focusing on that vehicular capacity, again, primarily at intersections. But there are other types of potential evaluation that could be added to accommodate different impacts associated with development. And lastly, our traffic impact study process is currently in code, really doesn't address gaps or inefficiencies in our transportation system. They're really focused on an individual development, and they don't fully address the cumulative effect of multiple developments over a single point. So we're looking for some flexibility to have that last development in, having to make all the improvements from all those previous developments. So that's kind of, those are kind of the topics there for what we're looking for as part of this process and why we kind of started this process back earlier this year. I want to give a little summary of our current code. And again, this is kind of on the slide. Our current practice says a traffic impact study is required if a development generates 80 or more peak hour trips, generates 500 or more daily trips, or there's some other criteria in our code as determined by the city engineer or transportation division about location near schools or locations near other recreational type locations, things like that are listed in the code. Most developments that we receive here in Carson City don't meet these thresholds. And so for the record staff, for our records, staff request a trip generation memo just to document that a development doesn't ask for that number of trips. So just to that, for our own purposes. When they do meet those requirements, the developer's consultant completes the traffic impact study and submits it to the city, and we review and comment on that. Once complete, any conditions or mitigations that are identified by the development's traffic impact study are required to be constructed and oftentimes added to the conditions of approval that get included into the planning commission. So what are the limits, what does our current say, code say about the limits for when a traffic impact study needs to do mitigation? So currently, if the city code indicates that if the traffic on our arterials, collectors and intersections operates at level service D or better during the AM or PM peak hour, there's considered no impact. And so when we consider level of service, that essentially is describing that delay I mentioned earlier. And so level of service is rated on a rate from A to F, with A being free flow, no congestion, and F being bumper to bumper, very delayed, very slow. So when you're looking at level service D, it's kind of in the middle there. And so if an intersection or a segment of roadway level service D or better, there's no impact and there's no required mitigations. E or F, then there's required mitigations by constructing certain improvements as identified in that impact study. So we're looking to, our code doesn't really address, it addresses intersections as a whole, but it doesn't really address like an individual movement or a change to the level of service or an individual approach to an intersection. It's the intersection as a whole, and it's only if it meets that level of service D. So you could potentially have a change to a piece of land that goes from level of service A on a road to a level of service D, and there's no required changes there. So we're looking to kind of address some of those inefficiencies and differences. The other section of code I wanted to talk about is Title 11.12, highways and sidewalks. This is important because this is the section of code that talks about basic frontage improvements required for developments, such as sidewalks and ADA improvements and other things, even if they're not directly related to traffic impact studies. So this is the section where we ask for widening of streets or other half-street improvements, other pavement improvements designed to meet current standards or current adopted plans, like the regional transportation plan. So for instance, a development along one street may not have to meet this standard because the standard, the street itself is already improved. It's already the right width. It has ADA compliant sidewalks. Where you have another development, regardless of size, comes in an area that's not as developed, they're having to do curb gutter sidewalk, half-street improvements and other things like that. So we're looking to kind of tie that into the traffic impact study to make it more fair and equitable, as I mentioned. Sometimes some of these sections, some of these requirements in this particular code section require a lot of cost to the development. And so we're looking to kind of balance that cost back and get a little bit more fair, as I mentioned. Maybe this reduces costs from half-street improvements, but a traffic impact study could change some of that cost sharing in that respect. Well, these are the two sections of code we're really focusing on in relation to this traffic impact study process. So what are our goals here? Our goals listed on the screen, primarily, there's four main goals. We're looking to really better understand when a traffic impact study is needed and give the development a better expectation as to what's needed to provide that more consistent approach. They're not guessing, or we're not changing the process midstream. We're really looking to ensure consistency in the application of the methodology used, going back to that, one of those items for the reasons why we're doing this. We want to potentially expand or modify the requirements of the code to provide more clarity for that development project on the methodology to be used and when it's to be used. We want to provide fair application across the city for all different types of development, all different sizes of development, so that we're preventing that last in, last development, having to make all the improvements approach. Looking to provide a framework for potentially more than just an impact meeting, meaning it just doesn't meet a level of service D. We're looking to have a methodology that provides some flexibility to mitigate those actual gaps in our system and provide a way to kind of not have somebody create new gaps by building something that's isolated or creates an island. But if we can kind of contribute together, we can eventually develop a whole, an improvement that meets a longer need in a greater area of the corridor. And lastly, we want to provide that flexibility, and that kind of leads to that last point, is take the focus off of traffic capacity and really provide a mechanism to construct improvements where they're really needed based on that need of that development. And so we're not looking at just traffic, we're looking at all other modes and focusing on how that, those other modes are potentially affected. So that's our goal, to be more flexible and look for incremental ways to have developments mitigate some of the continued pressure on our network by helping to kind of prevent new issues on our network. You know, we want a safe, predictable and reliable transportation system. So who's kind of involved in our process here? There's kind of three prongs. The first one there is the planning commission. They're really kind of listed, their roles are listed on the screen. The second one there is the RTC, and they provide the guidance on the policy. And the third prong is our advisory committee. And our advisory committee really consists of members from the building industry and from engineering community and folks who are actually using our code and following our traffic impact study requirements. And we're looking to have them be involved because we want their, we want their input from that bottom-up approach to be able to build a process that they'll be comfortable with and they'll be satisfied and be able to use as we go forward, whatever that methodology happens to be. So they're really the key working group here. And they're called the TSAC, the Traffic Study Advisory Committee. They're a one-time group that we created just for this individual project to help get that input. We've met twice, as I'll show in a moment. We plan to meet at least a couple of more times, and they'll help us kind of review those thresholds and identify those levels of what's appropriate or not appropriate as part of our new framework. Ultimately, all that funnels into the Board of Supervisors, and that's really, the first step is why we're here today. Considering all that input from those three groups, the Board of Supervisors really, and we're looking for that input today, is to get kind of some input from you all on this framework and what works or what doesn't work and what your input may be on what you'd like to see. So we can help the advisory committee and steer that committee on guidance, on those thresholds and values. So looking at our stakeholder input, we presented a similar presentation to the Regional Transportation Commission back in January. Touch a little bit on that in just a moment. Presented again to the planning commission also at the end of January. One of the planning commission items, they were similar to the RTC and some of the options that they supported, but they really wanted a process that was more easily understood so that they could better understand and know when impacts were needing to be mitigated. So they see these traffic impact studies through their processes, and they're not experts in traffic engineering. And so they wanted a little bit of a process that could be a little bit easier for them to understand. They also had some concerns about consistency, and they also had concerns about not wanting to overcharge or double charge developments for doing a traffic impact study and then having to build certain things. So they were looking for that, kind of that fair balance that we're aiming for as well. And ultimately, they wanted a process that was treating everyone fairly across the city. Then we had our two traffic advisory study committees, and that's a list there of members who are on that advisory committee that we've met a couple of times. So what's our process? You know, we numbered, we identified a number of options, and this is just kind of a flow chart of how we evaluated and screened the options, using the traffic study advisory committee to screen those and vet and discuss and identify those impacts. Ultimately, from all that input from the RTC, the planning commission, the traffic study advisory committee, we're here today to kind of present a framework for a potential new traffic impact study process. But before I get into that framework, I just want to give a high-level summary of what the options were that we considered. Option one, there's a modified existing process. It's really just an enhancement of our existing code. Option two was very similar to option one, except it defined a select list of consultants that the city would identify who would be qualified to do traffic impact studies. The idea being with option two is that if we have a set list who does this every day, we get a more consistent approach and they know the city. Option three, which was eliminated by the RTC in January. Option four is an impact fee, and that's specifically governed by NRS. Option five is an impact mitigation option, which is modeled after some examples we received from Aspen, Colorado, that essentially identified that a new development had a set number of trips that were generated, vehicular trips, and then they had to construct improvements that would offset those number of trips. So if you had a development that generated 20 trips, for instance, they could build sidewalk, or they could do landscaping, or they could do a bike lane, or they could do whatever their menu of choices happened to be to offset those trips, to encourage other modes and other ways of doing transportation other than getting in your vehicle and driving. So that's kind of how that one was created. Then option six, which was added by TSAC at meeting one, is our pro-rata option. This is really similar to what we're doing here in Carson City as well for the Appian Way Signal and some other projects, where we have multiple developments providing a pro-rata share or a small dollar amount toward an individual project. And so you have multiple developments paying toward one project. Ultimately, that project would be constructed at some point. Listing here is some of our, some of the key takeaways from the Traffic Study Advisory Committee. I won't read all of these, but this was some of the critical elements that we took out of the meeting following them. And we use these really to set some objectives. And these are the objectives we established to evaluate and screen our alternatives and the options that we mentioned that I just went through a second ago. And so these are really kind of considered questions, if you will. I mean, that first one is, you know, is the option straightforward and understandable with the fine impacts and mitigation requirements? Or does it overburden the city? Or does it overburden the development? So we kind of asked ourselves each of these questions as objectives for each of our processes. Using those objectives and using the goals and using input from the advisory committee, we developed evaluation criteria that we were actually able to kind of rank and rate each of the options. The first, the top picture there, it says combination option. This is our first method. We were kind of looking at a benefit balance. So if we look at each option, who's seeing the benefit? Who's getting more of the responsibilities? Who's having to build? Who's having to take ownership? So there's kind of that benefit balance, city versus development. And so we kind of evaluated each of the options against that benefit balance. Similarly, at the bottom one there, options comparison, we did a comparison of each of the options compared against each other. So is option one better than option three? Is option five better than option six? And so we evaluated those against each other to kind of weight that back and forth. So these were the options that we identified. Option three there was missing because it was eliminated by the RTC, but these were the ones we were screening and evaluating as part of the TSAC. In order to really help do that evaluation and help the TSAC understand and apply this in a real world, these are three new slides that are attached to this, is we took two real-world, actual projects. We took the Silverview Townhomes, which is a 34 single-family unit townhome down on Clearview and Silver Sage. And we took Little Lane Village, which is 151 single-family development over on Little Lane. So Silverview Townhomes, that development creates 19 vehicles per hour in the peak hour, PM peak hour. Little Lane Village creates 149 vehicles per hour in the PM peak hour. So when you look at these two developments, you've got a smaller one, Silverview Townhomes, that doesn't trigger the need for a traffic impact study under our current code, and Little Lane Village, which does trigger the need for a traffic study in our current code. So what we did, and we walked through the TSAC with these particular, walked them through with these particular graphics, and I'll just kind of give you a quick summary of the thing. I won't go through every slide. But essentially, the first column is that option column, where you've got existing impact fee, impact mitigation and pro-rata. Options one and two are very similar to existing, so we didn't really add them in here. It would just be kind of redundant. Then the next column over is, this is the city efforts and tasks. Then we had development efforts and tasks. We had then three columns about mitigation. And so there's three types of mitigation. There's one that's required by code. These are code requirements, like building basic frontage improvements, like sidewalk and ADA compliance and a driveway and things like that. Then there's discretionary requests. These are requests that are in code, like it says, something that says like at the discretion of the Public Works Director or the city engineer, or something along those lines. And then there's the identified impacts. And so for identified impacts, that's if a traffic impact study were completed, that traffic impact study would have identified mitigations to be constructed. And so that's what that column's for. And then lastly, the cost sharing column. And so this is kind of an evaluation of like things for the city, like staff time and staff effort and review time versus the development costs. And I'm focusing specifically on transportation, traffic costs, not so much the development cost as a construction-type thing. So you can kind of see for this first one on the existing there, for identified impacts, since there was no traffic study completed, there were no identified impacts from the development. However, in this particular development, we did ask for a slurry seal. So the city will receive a payment for a slurry seal on these public roads at this case. Just kind of looking through those other options there, you know, impact fee would have the most cost to development. In this particular case, using methodology used by RTC Washoe, impact mitigation, using the Aspen, Colorado tool, we were able to kind of assess that, offset those trips. And pro-rata, similar kind of to what we've created for the Appian Way Signal, we kind of created a calculator, an example calculator to kind of see how that may or may not work. Looking at Little Lane Village, similarly, this one was required to do a traffic impact study. And so we had, they had some mitigations listed in that traffic impact study there under four identified impacts, which included the lengthening of Fifth Street, turnpocket and some additional turnpockets at Little Lane and Solomon Road. So you can kind of see how some of these balanced out. And we walked through the TSAC, each of these options to see how these would work and evaluate the criteria using these real-world projects. I'm happy to talk about those as we need to, as we'd like. Using that, those projects, we went through and screened these options. And so the TSAC went through and eliminated the existing option two, option four, option five, which kind of left us with options one and six. And there were benefits to both options. Option one was relatively the simplest process. It provided a little bit more clarity in our code to make the methodology more consistent, but it wasn't very flexible, and it wasn't very equitable to some of our smaller developments potentially. It didn't address both sections of those code, as I mentioned earlier. Option six, on the other hand, could be seen as more expensive, could be seen as very discretionary. And so we looked at, well, what if we could combine an option that took away some of those discretionary ideas, but provided more flexibility in how the impact study could be evaluated and implemented? So that's kind of where we created this new option that we ended up carrying forward and creating a framework for. So this is the conceptual framework, and I'll walk through it real quick here. And so this is what the, kind of that new option ultimately looks like. So essentially, similar to what we do existing, is that all developments, over a certain size, and that size is to be determined, is really to create a trip generation memo, just to document how many trips are being generated by that development. And I'll just mention, everything in this framework is really up for discussion, and we haven't worked out a lot of the details as part of this particular meeting. That's where we want the advisory committee. We want their input, and we want your input to help guide the advisory committee on where they, what direction we should go on some of these levels and criteria, and what's appropriate or not appropriate in this item. So I just kind of wanted to mention that. Anyway, back to our, the basic, you know, basic requirement is that most developments would be likely required to complete a traffic impact study, along with some basic frontage improvements, such as sidewalk and ADA. But maybe those basic frontage improvements don't include street widening. Maybe they don't include pavement reconstruction. Maybe they don't include bike lane in areas where there's no bike lane. there's no bike lane currently. So some of that could be pulled out of our existing code and put in toward a different process as part of our traffic impact study process. So it's looking to provide more consistency and focusing on where impacts and developments really needed, rather than just having to build it because our code says you have to build it. But essentially, there'd be an option here to, for a smaller development or simple developments, maybe they don't need to complete a traffic impact study. They could have the option to pay a flat rate or some prorata contribution toward a single project, again, like our Appian Way Signal, where you've got multiple small developments that by themselves probably don't, may not trigger a traffic impact study, but cumulatively lead to the need for a traffic signal. And so if everybody's contributing a small portion, we're able to get that traffic signal, you know, potentially implemented. On the other side, we still have potential for large developments, multiple, you know, of any type, industrial, commercial, residential, whatever, and so those still have a need, potentially, to review, to do a traffic impact study, to identify, hey, maybe we do need a traffic signal here, maybe we do need additional turn lanes, or whatever that mitigation happens to be. And so for larger, more complex projects, a traffic impact study is still probably needed, and it would look at things that our code currently looks at. Trip distribution, intersection analysis, roadway segment level of service analysis, could look at multimodal level of service. That's all possible as part of a potential option moving forward. And ultimately, they would either construct those improvements that would be mitigated, or again, they could potentially pay toward that prorata share. So that's kind of the conceptual framework of what that would look like for that combined option I mentioned. I'll come back to this slide in just a moment, I just wanted to wrap up here on this slide. So really, as I kind of mentioned here, looking for some input from you all to help guide the advisory committee. Our next steps are to really go back to the advisory committee between, you know, June and August over the summer, to kind of start refining this process, defining those thresholds, parameters, values, et cetera, and get some recommended guidance on the methods to create. Ultimately, we'll come back to the Planning Commission and the RTC for additional input, and to the Board of Supervisors to receive, hopefully, approval on a potential modification to the traffic impact study process, so that we can therefore begin code amendments in the future. So that was what I had on the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions on any topic, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Bagwell.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Supervisor Shudee?
It's actually more of a comment, if that's all right. First of all, wow, this is great. And I just am so impressed by the process and how thorough it is. And my email, I reached out yesterday asking about a conversation that had been, was between the building regarding credit for different mitigation opportunities. And my question was, was the answer something that the development community was comfortable with? Just because I love this open dialogue, and it sounded like it was, and that's what dialogue really is about. That's what working together really is about, because then you can get a project and a vision that truly meets the needs of everyone. So thank you so much. This committee, I mean, reading through the notes and the back and forth and the specifics that are addressed in terms of not only the traffic impact for one particular development, but really that potential cumulative effect, because that has come up. It came up before, earlier in the border crossing conversation. How does one development then potentially affect another with traffic? And this addresses that. So I just want to say kudos to the staff for all the work you've done and for really the balance, the juggle, the listening, the working through, the brainstorming. As I also wrote in my email yesterday, I had a list of questions, and then really reading through these two committee notes and the back and forth, my questions were answered. So I just really am impressed and wanted to say thank you.
Supervisor Giomi?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo Supervisor Shudee's comments, a lot of good work here, and so thank you for that. You know, I think, I'm going to go back to that presentation that you have. You know, I think on the large development side, it seems to me those questions are a little bit easier to answer, because it's very obvious that if you're doing a 400-unit home, there are going to be impacts that are going to have to be mitigated. So I don't, you know, I don't think the city has done a bad job on that end of things. And I'm not saying the city's done a bad job in general, but I think the struggle is, on the other end of things, where you've got, and I don't have answers, I guess I'm just bringing this up to hear what your thoughts are. On the other end of things, when you have a series of small developments that may happen over the course of time, two, three, four, five years, that impact the regional traffic, and I'll use one, when I, right before I started on the board, there was subdivisions back behind Save Mart at the South End Town, and they were all individually, didn't meet a threshold to do a TIS. So help me understand how, in this new model, we can address that, so that, you know, particularly distantly spaced projects, and the prorata share, I guess, does address that to a certain extent. And since we've just started doing that, I guess, I guess I'm not convinced how that's going to play out, right? I mean, we're guesstimating what the cost is going to be. We already know that if we were going to build something today, that we figured the prorated cost of two years ago, we'd be way off the mark and way under. So we would have under-collected. And the opposite could be true of a developer. If we're doing the impact today, we may very well over-collect on what the cost is going to be a year and a half from now. So I'd just like to hear what you think. These are hard questions, I don't expect you to have an answer, so I guess I'm just, but how do we sort of kind of, you know, mesh that stuff together? And then I have a couple of follow-ups, too.
Sure, so I'll take a stab at starting here, and Lucia can add in. So for instance, you know, the Appian Way is kind of that first one we've kind of started, and so it's kind of a 10-year life on that one. So any project that comes in in that 10-year period is going to contribute to that. And you're right, if we don't build that in 10 years, we're going to return that money. If we've overcharged, then we're going to have to return that money. If we've undercharged, then we can't, the city will have to supplement that. One of the potential concepts is not, maybe it's not prorata toward an individual project, maybe it's a prorata toward a performance district. Where, you know, the city's broken up into five performance districts, so maybe that, every development that happens in a performance district pays toward a pot toward that performance district, and then that money could be distributed on all types of projects in that performance district. That could be established on a number of factors that, frankly, I don't have the answer on how that could be established, but it could be a flat rate, it could be the number of trips, it could be vehicle miles traveled. There's a whole bunch of different factors we could consider, that the advisory committee could consider, in how that potential performance district prorata contribution could be established. But that's one potential.
So that would almost be, I actually like that. So that would almost be a trade-off, where they contribute a prorate amount, a period of time passes, nothing else is going to happen. We're not going to do that thing that the prorate amount was to contribute to, but we do have the funds and we can impact that transportation district in another positive way.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, if it's not a point A, maybe it's at point B, but it still is contributing within that district.
Yes, it's an option.
So I do like that concept, actually, I like that concept a lot. The other one is, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this. You know, when we, and I'll give you an example, very specific example, because I know a couple of people who are developing one-acre lots on Curry Street next to the train museum. One recently had to impact his project to the tune of probably close to a quarter of a million dollars to do sidewalk, street widening, all of those improvements. It is an isolated acre among acres that are not yet getting developed. This particular business will probably generate a lot of trips, but there's an adjoining acre where I could see someone build, for instance, a CPA office, that generates almost no trips, and they're going to have to contribute the same amount of money. In a case like this, we're talking about a parcel that is adjacent to state land, where we know there's never going to be, never going to be improvements that continue that process. So how do we sort of vet that, where we're fairly charging the people, but also realistically charging them, right? It doesn't make sense, for instance, to, in this particular case, in my mind, to build 100 free-to-frontage sidewalk with ADA ramps on either end and a driveway in the middle, when we know it will never connect to anything, nothing, because the state is never going to do anything with the back of that train museum. And there's not even any way to continue a sidewalk along that east side of Curry Street above the bank. So I guess I would challenge you to find a way to address those kinds of things, because to me, in my mind, it's not fair to do that to someone, and that may be, I guess, the instance where maybe a prorate amount is collected, but it's a lesser amount, because it isn't a direct impact to that business. And then I suppose you could spread it to the transportation district, but then it just, it seems like a big burden to some businesses. And when you're, when a developer is doing it across 400 homes, you know, let's not kid ourselves, that cost is getting spread among those homes. It's less impactful on a per-home basis. But if you're doing it to one business, where it's a quarter of a million dollars, it's much more impactful to that business and the people who go to that business. So on the one hand, I, you know, we want to have consistency, we want to have a nice community, we want to have, you know, all those improvements. But on the other side of things, we don't want to make it so that development doesn't come here, because then, you know, no one wins. So I see Aaron nodding his head over there, but I mean, and I appreciate his involvement and the team's involvement, the engineers' involvement from the public sector, because hopefully that will help balance this out. And, you know, I'll send you guys off, and maybe you can come up with some miracle to do that, but, and I'll leave it on Aaron to do that. But anyway, consider that, and maybe, you know, think of finding a way to sort of try and balance that out.
No, and I appreciate your comments, Supervisor Giomi. I think that is one of the challenges that we have in this process, is figuring out that particular instance. And, you know, as the city, we don't, I personally don't want to have all these patchwork of sawtooth roadways that are narrow and wide, narrow and wide, because then we have, they build it, they pay to have it built, and we have to come back in, and if it's not built in the right spot, we have to tear it out. When we do our, whatever project we have, pay for it again, and that's not, that's not the right thing to do. And so we're, that's a struggle with this, and we're certainly looking for that solution.
And so I have one more. On the prorata comments, and the prorata, and let's use Anderson Ranch as an example. When do we commit to ourselves in the process that we're going to build out a given thing? And let's use the connection of Ormsby Boulevard as an example. That's been on the books for decades. I mean, I've lived here 45 years, it's been on the books that whole time. You know, so Anderson Ranch gets built, we collect a prorated share for that very thing. Nothing else happens up there. When do we, as a city, when's the trigger in there where we're going to say, you know what, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and do this, and then we're going to collect prorata from future developers of the actual cost of that? So are we thinking about that in here somewhere, where we actually have a trigger point where we're saying, we are going to do it? And I know that 10-year mark is there, but, you know, I don't know, maybe just something to think about as trigger points, to say, hey, we've collected that prorate amount, we know it's going to be a long time, it is a benefit to the community as a whole, we've got to go ahead and push this road through, or finish that sidewalk here, or whatever it may be. And I realize we're taking money from other projects.
Yeah.
But at a point, it does reach the level where it becomes a benefit to the whole community. So thank you for listening to the ramblings.
No, I appreciate that, good point.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Looking at the options matrix, I guess that's panel number 11. On option two, where you're talking about, you know, picking from an approved list of consultants. I know I have received a number of comments where constituents really don't have any confidence in the credibility of some traffic studies. They feel like the contractor has started with the answer that there is no traffic impact, so build the study to say that. So in this idea with an approved list, perhaps the way that could work, rather than the contractor choosing that person or that firm, you pop a few names out of the bingo ball, and there's your options. That way, hopefully, that would eliminate some of the angst over traffic studies being credible.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something we can add to our current framework. I mean, I think there's still a consultant component as part of what we're proposing here and showing here today. I know that there are some types of development in some companies that are, you know, national companies that have consultants they like to use, because they use them everywhere. So that this particular option would limit their ability to do that, but that's not to say we couldn't do that.
Right. And to Supervisor Giomi's point of consistency, you know, there are places that I think we really need to work on consistency, rather than choosing from a menu of improvements that we want to do. And I think Highway 50 is one of those places that that should be pretty consistent through there. I realize that if you want to, you can stay on a sidewalk and a dedicated easement area from Bain Street all the way to the Lyon County border. However, you kind of need to know where it is, cross the street a time or two to get there, and so, yeah, flexibility, but then there are places like Williams Street out to the freeway that, this is how you're going to do it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shudee?
Thank you. To piggyback on what Supervisor Giomi said, I agree, it's super important to look at the costs as they affect not only the individual development, but also the accumulative effect. I just think, as you move forward, to continue really addressing those, you know, how a development, whether it's individual or something large, really does affect traffic patterns with the need to be creative, and, but in a consistent way. So keeping in mind those options that truly make sense, so not options, because it's always been these options, like you addressed, you know, sidewalks, or a wider road, or a narrower road. But what options make sense, not only for that particular area, but for the area three blocks away, and then ultimately, for how people are traveling. And I think, you know, while it's easy to think about roads and traffic in terms of vehicles, the reality is, not everyone has the means to own a car or maintain a car. Some people really do ride their bikes, because that is what is in their budget, and that is their way to get to work. And I think it behooves our community to provide, or to have safe routes, so folks can get to work, and where they don't have to get in a vehicle, or where it's just as easy to ride as it is to drive. And while it might be a shift for us, because our culture really, really is more based on vehicle traffic and travel versus bicycle as a way of transportation, I'm grateful that bicycles are now being used more and more, and it's really, you know, it's not only for exercise, but it's also as a way to get from point A to point B. Also, the bus, you know, our jump around Carson, when we think about traffic and we think about ways that these developers can perhaps supplement or mitigate, or whatever term you want to use, for the developments, maybe it could be in terms of easier access to jack. I also want to acknowledge, you know, with development and travel and costs, it's, again, it's, to really think about ways to be creative and create. it's to really think about ways to be creative and creativity doesn't have to be willy-nilly or anything goes. It really, it really can be within guidelines based on what's best for getting from point A to B safely, mitigating the effect on traffic and congestion, allowing folks to have options. And so it's a big job, but as I said earlier, I think that the staff and this advisory committee is well-equipped to have some good, robust discussions. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I think that you're looking for us to give you a little bit of direction. And so I'd like to kind of work towards that because I do think this board should give them some framework. So we're not getting a proposal back that we will not entertain. So maybe I can help us just as a little bit, just to provide some framework and true concepts here. So one of the thought processes, should we do an impact fee? Personally, for me, I'm not interested in an impact fee because I want more flexibility for the projects. But again, I'm willing to listen to everyone else because I'd like to take impact fees off the table. I like the prorata share to be able to say, if you flip back to the one where it was 19 trips per day for the small projects, I like the prorata opportunity to say, I want to charge whatever, $100 per vehicle, trip impact, whatever. And that, we then would take that to that transportation district so that you are indicating that for this development, it's the impact to this area and we will use it to that area, but I don't want the 10-year clock in there because I might not get enough money for the instance that Stacy talked about. Doggone it, they're only going to develop these acre parcels and it's going to take us 20 years and I'm never going to get the Appian signal done and be able to spend the money. So I really like the option of it being fair and consistent and for 19 vehicle miles, it equals X. And you put that in the pot of money that improves Transportation District One. And then as we get enough money in there, it could be a sidewalk, it could be a bike lane, it could be whatever the city needs to mitigate within that transportation district so that it still helps the development and the place that had the project. So I'm not going to go take it to another side of town, but that you use it. So I particularly like the flexibility that gives us because as time changes, then I don't have to change the code, right? And I don't have to add to the project list. It's like, oh, wait, now the right thing to do is, we now have enough, we can finish a sidewalk like somebody gave an example, right? Finally, it won't be a sidewalk to nowhere because we can go ahead and do the whole four miles now because we've generated enough money or we can use other projects plus the transportation district money to get there. So I particularly like that arena. And I just want to put on the record that nothing here is to address the actual fixing of city streets. That is not going to be accomplished in this. This is just to fairly assess project impacts and the way to be consistent. And I do think all developers want to be able to, oop, I know the math, right? It's $100 per vehicle travel or whatever. Because it does really bother me also in the code, section 11, I've had lots of discussions with you, Stacy just gave an example on Curry Street, but it needs to make sense. Like you said, even though it's in the code, you're like, wow, that's in the code. Well, if the project's $30,000 and I require 200,000 worth of mitigation, the project will never get done. And so we have some blighted properties in town that would have been glad to do some fixes and our own code is prohibiting, is making it so cost prohibitive, we can't do it. So I would like you to look at any flexibility, again, within that area. And then the other section that bothers me is that Carson City has selected Level of Service D. I'm interested in your guys' thoughts whether we should look to a mitigation, the example you gave, if I'm a B road right now and I'm going to become a C road when this comes in, you don't have to do anything because you got to be worse than a D. So I think we should, should look at that also. I think the committee should work hard to find that consistency and fairness, but with the maximum flexibility. Again, I don't even mind the guy on the large project that would have to put in a sidewalk to nowhere. I don't mind a cafeteria option that they could, instead of doing that and kind of looking ridiculous to have a sidewalk out in the middle of nowhere, let them opt in to pay the amount of dollars that that would have been into a broader Transportation District need, right? To say, hey, not the sidewalk in front of me because that doesn't make any sense, but boy, would it make sense in Transportation District One to put the sidewalk over there. So I like the flexibility to the developer to be able to really work with you to say, this has no common sense to it. But I still, so you could mitigate that and pay the money. And so is that, I just want to make sure we're giving them a direction to work with this committee. Supervisor Jones?
Well, when I read through this, I really liked the objectives on page 18 or number item 18. I really liked it when it says, is the option straightforward and understandable with definable impacts and mitigation requirement that did not overburden both the city or the developer? I really liked that. I think that's, to me, that's the whole thing in a nutshell. And we focus on the development impacts and the actual needs for the developer. I think this is a great, great statement here. And it's very simple and very transparent to me, and I believe in transparency. And I think that's the way we should continue, personally.
Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I mean, I think you and I said some of the same things to them, so, you know, I think they got some ideas from what I suggested as well. And I'm okay not doing an impact fee, but really, it's a matter of semantics. I mean, if you're charging, if you're charging them a per-vehicle fee, it's an impact fee. So, you know, I mean--
I mean, versus the NRS impact fee.
Yeah, I get, I get that. You know, I mean, it's just, but from a transparent standpoint, it's an impact regardless of whether it's an impact. Anyway, you know, I think, I do want to be careful on the bigger projects and I don't know where we, where we cross that bridge, but I, you know, I wouldn't want like a, you know, 400-home project to be able to opt out of putting sidewalks--
I agree.
--on an arterial. I wouldn't want that. I'm not even sure I'd be happy with a 20-home unit saying, nah, I don't really want to do sidewalks. I'll just give you, you know, the equivalent and you can go use it somewhere else. So I think if we're going to do that and we're going to have some options, then I think it needs to be much smaller than that. And I also don't have, I'm not married to Level D, Level of Service D as the point. So, but you brought that up. I mean, you brought up that you're, you know, moving from an A to a C is potentially a big jump. And so maybe if you move two jumps, regardless of where it is, or whatever you come up with, but as an option, if you move that, then there is some impact that has to be mitigated. And maybe that's what Lori talks about where there's a cafeteria sort of plan of things they can do in the immediate area. You know, it may not be a sidewalk right in that development, but maybe there needs to be a crosswalk a couple of streets over that would help mitigate, you know, walking or bicycle traffic or something like that. So I wouldn't be against that and I'm not married to D. Maybe C is a better number. So I'd like to have you and your team, you know, kind of hash that around a little bit.
And I'll mention this just for the board's background is that, you know, a lot of communities do a lot of different things when it comes to level of service on their roads. And so they sometimes can set different thresholds for different classifications of roadways, maybe local roads or C, arterials or D, certain corridors that we know are never going to be able to provide enough capacity, that one could operate at level of service F. So what? Just understand, if the public understands, if the traveling public understands that this road's going to be congested, we've accepted that there's congestion here, then there's no, you know, that particular corridor may be a lower level of service than even D. And so it can be, it can be varied corridor by corridor or roadway classification or all kinds of different methodologies.
Yeah, I like that. I absolutely like that. It doesn't have to be a solid, it's always this. So I like that option where, yeah, I mean, there may be some things, look, we've had to accept that, you know, a lot of our roads are going to be the way a lot of our roads are going to be for a while. So, you know, to just be realistic about it and say, that road's always going to be an F. And if you're going to go down that road, you know, add a couple of minutes to your trip because it's going to take longer. So I don't have an issue with that. Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey?
So I think to give direction, so I think a goal would really be aligning CCMC in the code to be able to offer other options that are consistent with the needs of the development, the needs of the district. But ultimately, what comes first is, I would say that, or weight is given to the code. For example, if, so a large development, they don't have an option of not putting in sidewalks if that is the number one item that really is what needs to be done. So it's not that you can choose, well, I'd prefer not to do that, I'd prefer this. No, there's almost like first option here, the tiers, if you will. And then if there isn't a need for this, then you have these other choices. So really based on the needs of the development, the needs of, or not the development, the needs of the neighborhood and the area.
I agree. Mr. West, you're on the TSAC. Did you want to comment?
Just so you have a green light.
Good morning.
Morning. And thank you for your participation on the committee to help form where we're going.
Thank you. Mayor Supervisors, for the record, Aaron West, CEO of Nevada Builders Alliance. And I do appreciate the opportunity to participate in the TSAC. And today, I'm here in my capacity as CEO of Nevada Builders and on behalf of my Board of Directors. The conversation that you guys have had today has been awesome because if anything else, it highlights what a complex issue this is and the challenges that the community faces. And from our perspective, most of those challenges are funding-driven. And I think you all would agree, I know that I've participated in community groups on behalf of Public Works that identified, you know, we have this many roads, we have, you know, this obligation and we don't have the funding to do, you know, to meet those needs. And unfortunately, and certainly if you listen, you know, you listen to the public, they're going to tell you that we don't do our part. But the challenge becomes, how far do we go? There's so many things that were said today and there's such a part of this process that I truly agree that will make the process better. I do have some official comments that I would like to get on the record and I hope that they're received in the, you know, the spirit that they're provided, which is, you know, to spur collaboration and conversation and hopefully drive this forward. And it might get a little esoteric and it might require going much further than our current TSAC, but I think it's worth at least starting the conversation. So, so let's get this on the record. I would like to thank Carson City Public Works for including the Nevada Builders as a participant in the Traffic Study Advisory Committee, the TSAC. We certainly agree, we certainly agree with the basic premise that all projects need to play by the same rules, the financial impacts need to be equitable, projects need certainty and the ability to understand potential financial impacts early in the process, improvement dollars need to be spent in the most impactful way, dollars for improvements are much better than dollars associated with studies for the sake of studies, and the current system of mandating improvements after a project is approved, permitted or under construction is not acceptable. I think a lot of that was articulated today and we're in full support. If the goal here is to propose changes to the Traffic Study Evaluation Improvement Recommendation Process that accomplishes this, then we are all in. However, I think as has been identified, the underlying issue here is funding. Since the first meeting of the TSAC, the materials provided have contemplated changing the Traffic Study Impact System to transfer more of the financial burden onto the developments or generate more infrastructure dollars through an impact fee or both. Not once in the materials provided is the impact to housing affordability mentioned. You know, that's a big issue for us. And it will be impacted. So Nevada Builders understands that the toolbox for funding the necessary transportation improvements in Carson City is nearly empty, requiring staff at Public Works to shift costs for improvements of transportation infrastructure onto development of new projects and redevelopment of aged, blighted properties. And I really want to stop there because I truly appreciate what you guys brought up. We lived it, right? And this is, in no way am I, you know, going after staff or anything like that. It's within the code. When we did Bank Saloon, I would, I guess I would argue that we probably have little impact to Fifth Street, right? You know, we have the front of the building on Carson, you know, we have the entrance to the parking lot, which we chose to do. We didn't have to provide additional parking, we chose to do the parking lot for the sake of the project. And so we have the entrance off of Curry, but we incurred about $150,000 in improvements to Fifth Street with lighting, sidewalks, curb and gutter, everything that was necessary. And we were happy to do that because we really looked at it, we were participating with the city in really trying to beautify, you know, that area. But I know, for example, there's a project on North Carson Street that's under construction right now that has been blighted for so long and that project almost didn't happen because of the costs associated with some of these improvements that are currently mandated in code. So again, getting to a point where the city isn't, you know, just so starved for dollars that they have to demand all of these, all of these resources from every little project that walks in the door, I think would be, would be critical to being able to revitalize and really, you know, see this community grow. So, let's see. Okay, where was I? Damn. Okay. However, depending on the construction and development industry to provide this funding is particularly inappropriate in Carson City due to the fact that our small community is mostly built out and has little room to grow as time passes. Because of our mostly built-out status, the developer impact fee methodology for generating transportation infrastructure revenue cannot even begin to scratch the surface of the transportation funding problems in Carson City. The matter of community transportation improvements and road maintenance in Carson City needs a permanent solution and a perpetual source of funding that is compatible with today's economic environment. As we have discussed for years, the fuel tax is becoming more and more relevant as fuel efficiency increases, alternatively-powered vehicles become mainstream, and federal policies seek to wind down the use of fossil fuels in the coming decades. Also, the definition of transportation infrastructure has grown significantly to include sidewalks, walking paths, bicycle lanes, multimodal pedestrian facilities, landscaping and transit, with all the costs associated growing exponentially. If you think about when the fuel tax was implemented, you were literally paving a road. That was it. Now, all of those things are contemplated in our Complete Streets approach, right? Which we support, we support. So fuel tax cannot possibly exist as a permanent solution to the matter of maintaining and repairing said infrastructure in Carson City as these new paradigms become ossified in American society and politics. We understand that the general public operates from, in our opinion, an incorrect notion that development does not pay for itself. But the same funding challenges don't exist for water, sewer, storm drain or parks. Why? Because that infrastructure has a system in place that is supported by the community as a whole with a fee for a new development to pay its proportionate share of the capacity needed. That's how, you know, we manage this on everything but transportation. So ask yourself this question, if all developments stopped tomorrow, would your transportation improvement and maintenance funding problem go away? And this is, this is the one thing that I have stressed with the TSAC. And this is, this is the one thing that I have stressed with the TSAC. It's, you can, you can point the finger at development all you want, but if we stopped it all tomorrow, do you still have a funding, a transportation funding problem? And the answer is yes. So, that said, you know, I, I, I hope I, I don't, I hope I didn't come across as too negative or beat anybody up here. We truly appreciate the process. We agree with the, that, that there's some substantive changes that will really make this process better. Unfortunately, we also understand the untenable position that staff has put in with trying to transfer some of these funding deficits onto new development. And of course, we're worried about the impacts of that. So we would love to engage in, in a much broader conversation about how we fix the broken system as a whole. And with that, thank you so much.
So, Mr. West, if I can, one of the things the Builders Alliance has asked is that prior to us implementing any code changes, that you get longer lead times and notice because your projects take so long to come to fruition. So I'm just asking, do you think the TSAC methodology of bringing the group together to develop code changes in advance is helpful? You, you asked me to put that together with Public Works for all your code changes. Is this effective? Is this a good model?
Well, I think, I think the, the, the process is absolutely necessary, right, through TSAC. I think once we come up with, this is the ironclad proposal that to be adopted that's actually going to change the code, at that point, just like we did with the drainage, right? It's, it's at the end of the day, we understand changes need to be made, but we may not fully understand what those changes look like. So at the point of implementation, if we could have some, some lead time, and, and we would certainly, much like the connection fees, right, for water and sewer, it showed that we needed to be paying a lot more in connection fees, okay? But can we transition that over time so that we can, you know, try and, and, and address some of those issues? So I, I would just say, as we continue down this process, I, you know, it, it, I, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but in any situation where you're going to be, and this will, this will increase cost of development, so if, if we are going to be doing that, can we do it in such a way that we can work it in over time so that new projects have the opportunity to address them?
To finish penciling. Okay. Supervisor White?
Thank you. And thank you for your comments. And I might suggest that whatever final document is produced, that there be a mission statement at the beginning of it which incorporates that first paragraph that Mr. West read. I think that pretty well covered a whole bunch of, of what we're talking about here today. On the idea of being flexible and looking at codes, as, as I read Title 11, specifically in Point 12, staff is given some flexibility. However, what I hear from the community is that it's inconsistent. And so I think some policy-driven language that tightens that up so that it's consistent and predictable, right? So like we were saying, in my opinion, I think Highway 50 needs to be really consistent, not a whole lot of wiggle room. Somebody else might not agree with that. So we have to be able to figure out, you know, through policy and through these codes that we're being consistent and fair. As far as the impact fees and this sort of stuff, having negative connotations on affordable housing, while yes, we need to work on affordable housing, we need to be able to, you know, have America's dream available to everybody, I, I would observe that, the fact that we have very little inventory, what is being built is being purchased as fast as it can be built. In today's world, these fees probably aren't impacting affordability based on practically zero inventory.
Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, thanks. And thanks, Aaron, for your comments. I just want to take exception to a couple of things that you said. You know, I, I, I guess I'm concerned about the connotation that what we're doing here is a way to solve our road problem. And I, I, I don't know if you meant to come across that way, but that's kind of what I heard. And I just want to assure the public that that, that really isn't the intent of this, as the mayor said upfront. You know, you said the city is starved for dollars specifically. And you're right, in terms of road maintenance and road construction, it's not just us, it's, it's, it's an American problem, right? So I guess I just, I just would say to you that I, I don't feel, and I don't believe staff feels, that, that this is a way for us to solve those road problems. I, I see it as a way to, to do what it's intended to do, and I guess that's the direction I provided staff. This is to mitigate the impact of, of a development. And, and I, I think we really need to keep that focus. So if you're building 1,000 homes, that's a big impact to a region. And it's going to cost more than if you build a CPA office that generates four or five trips a day. And so I think the impact and the cost needs to be proportional, the cost needs to be proportional to the impact. And, and I guess I would just say to you that, that I, I hope you don't, and the general public doesn't feel like this is a way to make up for lost revenue. Because that's, that is not the intent. And I, and I, I want to put on the record that it's not the intent. And I do completely agree with you, and I know the other development you're talking about because I've spoken to that individual as well. But, you know, that's what I said, those isolated sidewalks to nowhere, we just, we really have to think about those. So, thank you.
And for the record, Aaron West, to clarify, I, I truly appreciate allowing me to clarify that, that position because that's not, certainly wasn't my intent. I, I guess to expand on that, if, if you were to just listen to the general public participation in the TSAC, you would hear comments like, you know, a person moving into a subdivision in Silver Oak is still driving on Cur, you know, South Curry Street at some point, and that's creating an impact. And so how do we quantify that impact?
Right.
And that's where, again, depending on how far down the rabbit hole we go.
Right.
You know, this could get very, you know, expansive. And so the idea of, let's, to your point, let's focus on, on that, you know, that development's obligations, and at the same time, let's look at how we, you know, take care of the rest of the issues within the city.
Well, and I think that's, that is the point that, that Mo brought up, you know, a while back, and that's, you know, making sure that, and, and now that we have a transportation engineer who can throw the flag on a TIS, that, and this is, you know, kind of off the mark, but now we have someone who can throw the flag on a TIS that says, no, you know, that, that document is, is utterly ridiculous. You, you need to go back and fix that. And, and we didn't have that before, and I think that was a big part of why this board approved that position, is because we wanted to have the ability to have a neutral party who was responsible for watching out for our, for the citizenry, so that if someone who lives on Curry Street couldn't contend that a development on Arrowhead Drive is going to impact them, right? As, as, you know, maybe someone put together. But at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, if there's a development on Arrowhead Drive, that someone in Bowers Lane probably will be impacted. And we need to make sure that, that, that those are addressed. And so, yeah, anyway, I, I, I mean, I, I agree with that.
Supervisor Jones?
Aaron, you made a comment that, and I want to ask the question, at what point do we, you know, we've been talking for years that the gas tax is not sufficient because of fuel efficiency, electric cars. At what point do we stop just saying something and take action? I mean, we're already in the hole. Does this start with legislature, state legis, is that where it starts? Or can we, if we wanted to say impose a tax or some, some, something for additional funds? Where does this start? Legislature?
You know, honestly, it can start in lots of directions. We can certainly review all the options that we have within our own toolbox, right? We could start that at the RTC discussion on the things that are already allowed by the legislature. We could look for things that maybe we want to do, but we don't currently have the authority to do, and request legislation for next session to do that. So I think it will start at the RTC to look at what, what, what's in the current toolkit, and then what's missing in the toolkit, and put together some viable proposals that then maybe, again, maybe even with TSAC, maybe with some of the community, to start looking at, do you like A, B, C, or D options? And then bring them back to this board to, to recommend, how, how are we going to solve over the next, you know, where are we going to be in year one, year five, year 10? You know, where are we going and how are we trying to address roads? Or the other option to admit, kind of something I heard said earlier, that this is going to be, this road's going to be an F. That's the way it goes. This road's going to turn to gravel. And that you really have a community conversation to say, what choices? What do you really want as a community? Are we willing to let some roads go? You know, I don't hear anyone in the public, so far, I've had not one single person in, you know, seven years come and tell me that, just go ahead and let my road become gravel, right? I've gotten zero. But that is the reality, right? You either start fixing them, or some are going to become gravel. And so I think it is a large issue. I think it is also, as Stacy's indicated, right? It's not unique to Carson City. I don't know, maybe we're the shining beacon on the hill or something that says we're going to try to make, to address it. So I think it will start at RTC with some options and ideas, and then bubble on up.
Talking about it for years, and, and I haven't seen any change, and yet our roads are getting worse and the money's getting less.
Because it's a big ask. You know, when you're looking at 15, 18 mil.
It's an unpopular ask.
And it's a very unpopular ask. It's hard to explain to the public the difference between a local road and an arterial, they, frankly, and I don't disagree with them, I just want my road fixed. I don't care what kind it is, right? I don't care that this funding source can only be used on this kind of road. And I think that's even one of the things you see that Carson City, while some say I don't like a complete street, I love a complete street because it, it opened up my options for funding to get more street work done. Not that I'm not hitting a stormwater at the same time, or a water project or a sewer project, but it's also allowed me to do more infrastructure than I could have ever done before. So the fact that we're combining projects is helping, but I agree.
I, I think, just to piggyback on that, though, you, you bring up something that's really important, and it's, it's truly explaining what complete streets are, what the costs are for road maintenance, what the need is, why gas tax doesn't cover it, and having that tough conversation of, you know, we, we need our streets improved, we need them maintained, we don't want a gravel road, and this does cost money. And the, the soundbite I've heard over the years, you know, we all have to live within our means. Yeah, we do, but we also all have house payments and car payments. And so the reality is, we, we, by, by taking out a loan, we in essence are going above our means. And, and, and that's why we want pay raises, and that's why we want cost of living. And, and it's almost that perhaps the city, we have to have this really awful tough conversation about how to bring in more money because things cost more, needs are there for everybody. We all also, though, have an opportunity to, to contribute, but that, it's going to be complicated, just like this whole conversation is just for a traffic impact study. You know, there's just, the ripple effect is profound.
Well, Aaron's right when he said, we don't just build roads, we build like a carnival. I mean, we've got sidewalks, lights, bike paths, and everything. We've got away from building just roads.
That's correct. Supervisor Giomi? Okay. Staff, do you feel like you have enough in the framework that you need to take back to all of the groups? You've gotten enough out of this?
I do, I appreciate it. I appreciate the input. Thank you, Mayor Bagwell.
Okay. With that, all right, then we're going to move on. And thank you, Mr. West, again, for the participation in TSAC. I think it's very valuable, and you may want to participate on, on Wednesday or something. Are we having a discussion potentially on road opportunities? So I invite your group to look at how we're going to pay for fixing the roads. So, thank you. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 17A, which is where we talk about legislation. Ms. Paulson?
Good morning. The only thing I wanted to discuss under this is, as everyone already knows, the 2021 legislative session ended on Monday. Our state lobbyists, Mary and Steve Walker, will be at our next meeting on June 17th to provide a short presentation on the highlights of the session. And my office will begin work with city departments to implement any of the changes that are necessary based on the legislation that was passed.
I also want to bring up for the record, we will be bringing at the next agenda item. As you can recall, we had a bill that this board said we would be neutral on or, or would not oppose on the cannabis lounges, as long as they gave us the authority to zone it out. There's two component pieces actually in the legislation, so the cannabis lounge and smoking in public areas. Because I guess there was some locations that wanted to do outdoor concerts or something that, so we'll be bringing forth our first reading to meet what this board requested during that discussion. So I just want to put that on the record, that the DA's office is working to meet the requirements in that legislation for us to disallow cannabis lounges and smoking in public.
I'll bring the Doritos.
Yep. That was good. So that was one of the public impacts. Overall, Nancy, did you see that there'll be a large shift budgetarily, that we will have to adjust the budget, or was it minor?
I believe it was pretty minor. We were able to get, our lobbyist was able to work to get many amendments that reduced any potential fiscal impact to the city, so.
Great. That's good news that we won't see a huge change to our ending fund balance projections. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions on legislation that you want to bring forward? Oh, Friday? Come on, Maurice, you want me to take that glory? Or go ahead, Maurice, you want to invite people?
I just want to thank this board for their support on AB 270. It passed unanimously in all committees and in both houses, and there is a ceremonial signing being planned. I think that's at Friday, 10:30. Did they finally set that?
Tomorrow at 10:30.
Tomorrow at 10:30, the governor will be at the Stewart Indian School to make the signing. And so we have one, one more piece of legislation we're going to come back and ask you folks to support, the next legislation and, what's that?
Remedy?
No. Freedom.
A little, a little more, yeah, a little more opportunity.
And at this point, we are operating. We offered tours over the Memorial Weekend. Oh, and for the public that might not know what I'm talking about, for the Nevada State Prison Preservation Society, AB 270. What's that? We were, absolutely. And we are having our board meeting next Thursday, and we will discuss the schedule for ongoing tours throughout the summer, through Nevada Day. So look for an announcement coming to all you folks that are frustrated about being sold out. Before you even get the notice, we should have some relief for that situation.
Great. It's wonderful news. Okay. Anybody else? I don't see any other hands raised, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 18. Ms. Paulson, do you have anything to report under this item?
No.
No. Any member of the board have anything to report or share? This was Supervisor Jones?
I attended the memorial service Sunday for Desi. Suzie and Rod Bannister opened up their ranch out in Gardinerville, and there was probably, I'm just guessing, 350 people there. It was just a huge turnout. Rod and Suzie have a seven-acre ranch, and the people took over most of it. It was just a great afternoon.
Good. Good. Thank you. Anybody else? I don't see any other hands raised, so with that, we'll go on to final public comment. Do we have any on the phone?
We have no callers on the line at this time.
Thank you. Do I have any final public comment in the room today? Okay. With that, unless there's any objections, we're adjourned. Thank you all again for a great meeting.